Father God, we just thank you so much. We thank you for the wonderful way that you bless us, for the way you keep us, for the way that you forgive us. Father, tonight I have special blessings on our school board members. I ask that you would fill them with wisdom, with courage, to do the job that they're appointed to do, but to always do it in a way that you would have them to do it. And Father, I just thank you for what I know you can do for us in Jesus' name.
To the right of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, ma'am.
Dr. Holmes?
Here.
Ms. Atkinson?
Here.
Dr. Walker?
Here.
Ms. Howard?
Here.
Ms. Foyle?
Here.
Ms. Brown?
Here.
All right, next order of business is to consider approval of the minutes of the regular school board meeting held on Monday, January 10th. Do you have a copy of those? And a motion and a second.
I'll use my prayer, and I'll second it.
We have any discussion? Any discussions from the audience? Hearing none, without objection, the minutes are approved. Next item, consider approval of events from a special school board meeting held on Monday, January 24th. And you have those, and a motion and a second.
Motion, yes, ma'am.
A second. Any discussion, board members? Any discussion from the audience? Excuse me, any comments from the audience? Hearing none, then, without objection, those minutes are approved. Next item is to receive information on the application of Custom Metal Works for an industrial tax exemption and other related matters. Dr. Fattman?
So, Mr. President, we have received our first ITF application, and this application was submitted by Custom Metal Works Incorporated and was approved on the 14th of January by the Board of Commerce and Industry. Since this is our first ITF application, my staff and I have been worrying more about this process over the previous weeks. I asked Baton Rouge Area Chamber Senior Director of Business Development, Donnie Miller, to come out and to share some information regarding this application. The purpose of this agenda item tonight is to learn more about the ITF process. I will turn it over to Mr. Miller, and the members of the board are welcome to ask questions. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for having me visit this evening. Again, Donnie Miller, Baton Rouge Area Chamber. Mayor Baruch outsources all of her economic development to Baton Rouge Area Chamber. Coming in and how they've executed and closed out. Ultimately, a company, when they're ready to make an investment into a community, will file what's called an advance notification. This advance notification puts the community and the state checks in, we're about to spend some money, we're about to do a project, we want to let you know. It's a $250 filing fee. It's not to collect dollars for the state, but really to weed out a lot of the people that will just file a bunch of paperwork and clog up a lot of government time. After that advance notification, when the company is ready to execute, they will file an application with the Board of Commerce and Industry. That is what has happened here. The Board of Commerce and Industry has received that application. They voted on this process and unanimously approved Custom Metal Works' application for an industrial property tax exemption. At that point, from the Board of Commerce and Industry, the CNI Board, it kicks down to the locals, which is ones here before you. At this point, after your recommendation, it goes back to the Board of Commerce and Industry, up to the governor for final approval. And then, when the company has completed their process, they will file an affidavit of final cost. That affidavit of final cost is like an itemized receipt saying, we spent the money here on these items, and we're closing on the project. So, to map it out again, advance notification, which is an estimate of the spend, putting you on notice, an application, an approval process by the locals, up to the governor, and then an affidavit of final cost. So, I want to make sure to run through the scope of this project, although it's small. It's important because this is the first time you all are seeing this, but this is a project for Custom Metal Works. It's to purchase a new tubing laser machine in order to expand available customer options. There were currently no tubing laser machines located in the state of Louisiana. So, this is very unique to our state, which is very interesting for this company and their growth. And this acquisition will make available services that typically are having to be contracted out of the state. It's a $930,000 investment, creation of two new jobs. That'll take the company from 41 jobs to a total of 43 jobs. New payroll of $120,000 for a total new payroll of a little over $1.5 million. So, the question you should be asking yourself, what is this going to generate in return for our community, and what would the abatement look like specifically for this body? So, over 10 years, the local tax revenue coming into the parish is a little over $128,000. That's an estimate, because again, this is over 10 years. We also like to lift the projects much longer because of manufacturing projects. These companies have a longer length of time. So, the 20-year local tax revenue is a little over $232,000. The total abatement is $108,000. So, let's go back to the 10-year. $128,000 coming in, the abatement is $108,000, making sure this project remains in the black. So, what is the estimated abatement for this board tonight? The school board abatement here would be $49,449. And the question I always like to bring up-
In five years?
Over 10 years.
Yes.
Yes, sir. So, we can divide that $49,000, round it up to $50,000 over a 10-year period. This is a relatively small project when we compare it to when we hear about Exxon or Shell or Honeywell in the community, where those investments are about $400, $500 million. This is sub a million dollars. But why it's important is this provides the ability for the company to grow, to hire, and move faster, which is what we want to see in our community, not just central, but in our parish. To give you just three more figures, the general fund abatement is a little over $2,000 over 10 years. The sheriff has a little over $12,000. The Metro Council just voted this past Wednesday, and it was unanimously approved. Typically, we get some back and forth from the community, asking questions. This one, there were zero questions, and moved right through the process, and that was due to the reputation of the company, in the community, what they've done for the community, and the size and scope of this project. Let me take a breath, and if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them. But that is the process as the project comes in, the dollars and cents, and again, this is looking at over a 10-year period.
Board members, do you have any questions?
I have one.
Yes, sir.
What type companies does this qualify? Is it all businesses?
Great question.
Manufacturing.
It is strictly manufacturing. So, this would not apply to the Amazons that were coming in being logistics. This would not apply to IT service, specifically a company that is manufacturing. And if we go even more granular, a company is designated by what's called a makes code. So, there's a specific accounting code that designates a firm to be within this umbrella of manufacturing.
And I don't think there are many manufacturing businesses in Central. I think probably that was-
Trade.
Ask around.
Trade.
What trade?
Trade is not.
No, it's not.
It's construction.
It's not.
Nothing manufacturing qualifies.
They did not qualify.
So, an interesting fact about manufacturers, in the economic development space, there is a larger multiplier for indirect jobs. So, for every job that's created within manufacturing, there are between eight and 12 indirect jobs created in the community. So, we think of spend having to go buy milk and dog food and fill up our gas tank and service industry, whereas when you translate that to IT service or software development, you have fewer jobs created. So, this is, these are the types of jobs that we want to see within our community, and these are the types of jobs that Baton Rouge and Louisiana are really good at and all the skill of work, you know, workforce.
And this was done automatically for many years. I mean, my daughter worked for the assessors' office. She started as student worker at LSU and worked her way up to the administrative assistant. And she said, I don't remember ever dealing with this, but it was only after John Bell Edwards came into the position of governor that they wanted to kick it to the school board for them to obey it. Is that right now?
The governor made that decision.
The governor did, by executive order, change the rules of this program. The intent behind that was to give local elected officials the ability to dictate dollars in their community coming in, growth in their community, and understand, is this where we want to be spending our time and effort? Do we want to assist businesses that are growing? Do we want to recruit businesses? This is one of the strongest tools Louisiana has in their tool belt to compete against Texas, Arkansas, the Gulf South. If everyone has tools, everyone has incentives, this is one of Louisiana's strongest tools.
So, before this change, the Board of Commerce and Industry handled this by themselves?
Yes, ma'am. They did. It was 100% abatement over 10 years, or five years, or five years ago.
How many other, so we're considering this for our board? Who else has to consider what other?
For this specific project, the Baton Rouge Metro Council, East Baton Rouge Parish Metro Council, and Sheriff's. This does not go to the-
The Metro Council's already approved it.
Yes, sir.
What about the sheriff's going to now approve it?
So, they are waiting, and there is a time limit for how this process works. There's a 30-day process where this board needs to give notice to Louisiana Economic Development that you're going to vote on, and then there's a 30-day window to vote on it. There are many communities in the state that have opted to just let that time lapse if they're going to approve it. It saves you all time and having to vote. This being the first project that you're seeing, I thought it was important that we had this conversation to make sure you know what you have.
Just historically, you know, I frequently compare us to other small school districts, typically Zachary. I mean, they have quite a bit of manufacturing. You know, they have Georgia Pacific, they have some PA Seth along the river there. Have they generally 100% always approved the abatement when ITF comes?
In the past, I have not seen Georgia Pacific come with an application since John Bell has made changes to the program. But yes, typically, if there are large purchases of equipment or expansions within their company, yes, this is something that they will look to take advantage of. And it's part of their calculation. When we look at big companies, do we make the investment in Singapore, in Texas, or do we make the investment in Louisiana? And I always like to look at it as the marshmallow test. And that sounds silly. Would you like one marshmallow today, or would you like three marshmallows in a week? And what happens is, this tool should recruit companies, or to help companies expand, you're abating taxes today for a greater income much, much further down the road.
But with the change he made, you're still going to get 20% of that tax increase. So, better than nothing that was before.
Yes, sir.
So, do the math for me, guess. Let's say, no, it's, I'm certain it isn't today, but say, four years from now, his property, just due to inflation, has inflated, you know, is he fixed at this previous assessment now for 10 years, or does his property taxes go up, just like mine does and everybody else's go up? What happens?
Great question. So, this project is just based on his equipment purchase of the $930,000. So, that will be frozen in time. His assessed value on his current property will continue to go up. And it's interesting, because I always assumed property tax was specifically the box, the grass and the property. Well, then, it's actually only equipment. And there's an appreciation schedule that's calculated within that.
And Donnie, I'll just mention that, as I was trying to find out some other information about this to share with board members, I checked around with many of the regional superintendents, and they all said that they have always unanimously, you know, approved these assets they went for, again, because it's for the economic development.
Except for St. Louis, they had a debacle. With Exxon.
They had one.
But did they go back, though, and change that?
So, Exxon had-
But Exxon built.
Yes.
They did build it, with a gamble, and they took that to be-
Separate projects, though. Those were for renewal applications. Everything that Exxon has brought for new has passed through, because I manage each test pressure. And I do want to point out, I'm working really close with Ron Erickson here in your central chamber. He's been kind of my eyes and ears within the community, doing a fantastic job, extremely helpful. So, again, if there are questions that pop up after tonight, have my contact information, please reach out directly, have your partner time and drive up with you.
Appreciate your time.
And I'll just mention that our timeframe, we had to turn in a form, basically with this agenda item, we sent that Friday. I think we had it till February 17th to let them know, or it would automatically be approved. And we had until March the 17th. And when I talked to the lady last week, of course, this was all, you know, brand new to me, and I've just been trying to find out kind of the best road to take on this. And Donnie's been creating help along the way, Ron, and so anyway, will that board meet in March, which is also March the 14th? Then we would actually bring it up for a vote with the board.
Oh, we can if we want. Do nothing, and it'll just automatically prepare. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I just wanted to make sure a lot of things out there whip out the deal.
So, right now, at this point, we could just do nothing, and it-
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, there's a shot clock, there's a time, and if you let that expire-
That's cool, ma'am.
It's season.
Thank you, Donnie. Appreciate your time.
Any other questions, board members? Please, let me know. Thank you so much. We appreciate you.
Thank you all.
Okay, the next item of business is to receive the superintendent's recommendation for administrative, instructive, and support staff positions. Dr. Fattman?
So, board members, we do have one retirement, and this would require a vote. This is Mrs. Beverly Williams. She's a fourth grade teacher at Central Intermediate, and she's going to be retiring on March the 2nd. So, we would need a vote, and I guess-
Yeah, we'll do a roll call.
You don't need a roll call.
On the retirement? Okay.
No, she took it. Oh, sorry, ma'am. Is she here?
Any other discussion, board members? Any comments from the audience? Hearing none, then that retirement is approved.
Next, we have one resignation. This is Mr. Michael Brettermeyer, who is a teacher at Central High School, welding teacher. We also have three appointments. Mr. Donald Adams, who will be the new welding teacher at Central High School. Ms. Sharon Birdman, who will be a T O R paraprofessional at CIS. And Ms. Mercedes Lehman, who will be a child nutrition tech. And the last item, we have one leave request, and this is something that the board would have to vote on as well. This is from Mrs. Alicia Taylor Douglas. She's in pupil appraisal and child search coordinator. She is asking for a medical sabbatical for the second semester of this 21-22 school year, and I would put that forward to the board to recommend, to approve that. Yes.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have any further discussion on that leave? Hearing none? We have any, just any comments from the audience? Hearing none, then, approve. That is approved without objection.
And that'll conclude our board call.
The next item is to receive a report from the Finance Committee meeting, which was held on Wednesday, January 26th. And Ms. Atkinson, you are the chair, and you have the report.
The Finance Committee met on Wednesday, January 26, 2022, and reports the following. The committee members received a presentation from Gallagher on side reliability insurance and took the information presented under advisement. This is a report only and requires no action. Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, ma'am. Next item is to receive a report from the Human Resources and Policies Committee on a meeting that was held January 26th also.
Okay, the Human Resources Policy Committee met on Wednesday, January 26, 2022, and reports the following. The committee recommends approval of the following proposed policies for a second reading. Policy D-74, dealing with purchasing, is a revised policy. Policy D-74A, bids and quotations, that also is a revised policy. Policy F-10.1, sabbatical leave. Policy F-10.4, sick leave. Policy G-11.4, parent conferences. Policy H-4, student welfare. And Policy H-11.2, expectant and parenting students. Mr. President, I so move.
Oh, have a second.
Sorry.
Okay. We have any questions of Ms. Browning or anyone else who may have been on the committee? Hearing none, do we have any comments from the audience? Ain't no comments from the audience? Then the second reading has been completed, and without objection, they go into the-
The committee recommends approval of the proposed school calendar A for the 2022-2023 school year, as presented by the staff. Mr. President, I so move.
I'll second, ma'am.
You've got a second. Any comments on the calendar? Or discussion on the calendar? Any comments from the audience? No comments from the audience, then the school calendar is approved for the 22-23 school year.
The third item, the committee discussed the attendance of our attorney at a school board meeting. This is a report only and requires no action. Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate it, ma'am. All right, the next item is to receive a report from the Facilities Equipment Committee held on that same Wednesday, the 26th. Dr. Walker?
Facilities Committee met after these previous two committees. The committee received an update on the construction projects that are going on, many of them that we have throughout the area, and this is a report only, requires no action. That concludes my report.
The next item is to receive a report from the committee on the whole meeting, which was held the same Wednesday, the 26th, and that, I will handle. The committee, the meeting was called to review and discuss a survey from the Louisiana School Boards Association, and we did that, and we got the information needed so that we could conclude it if we desired to. This meeting was held for informational purposes only, and no action was taken by the board. Next item, consider approval of the out-of-state field trip request, and Dr. Fattman has that.
So, Mr. President, Central Middle School has submitted a request for an out-of-state field trip with a gifted English 1 student to travel to Nashville, Tennessee, April 13, 2022, until April 15, 2022. The purpose of this trip is to view a theatrical performance of Romeo and Juliet, and to view and tour the Parthenon so students can explore, discover, wander, and learn through experiences that are uniquely tied to the traveling. I am asking for your approval of this request.
Make a motion to approve this wonderful trip?
As long as you can go.
I want to go.
I'll second.
English teacher that I knew.
Any discussion, further discussion? Any comments from the audience?
Thank you.
We haven't voted yet.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, without objection, then, that out-of-state field trip is approved, and we hope that they learn a lot and be able to tell us some things that we can do in the future. Okay, the next item is to consider granting the Child Nutrition Department permission to advertise for bids on necessary products for 2023 school year. Dr. Fattman?
So, Mr. President, this item comes up twice a year, basically, but the Child Nutrition Department is requesting permission to bid products to be utilized during the 2022-2023 school year. They would follow proper procedures in advertising and then accepting bids, and will make recommendations at the April school board meeting. So, we would ask your permission to allow them to go out for bid.
entertain a motion.
I'll second.
You both, you seconded. Any questions or discussion, school board members? Any comments from the audience? Hearing none, without objection, the Child Nutrition Department has permission to ask pass to those kids. Next item is superintendent's report.
What prices are going up, the brooks we store out, and they're handling the job, girl.
We are a little nervous about how the visitors will come in, because they're certainly increasing.
10%, my guess.
How much?
10%.
I think it'll be more than that. I hope it isn't, but. Yes, sir. Next item is superintendent's report.
A couple of items here, and I'll go through these, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have on these. Prior reports went home today for students. Hard to believe that we're halfway through February already. Principals are finalizing their summer plans for academic enrichment and also for remediation. The program of brick will happen at all three of our elementary campuses. We're also planning STEM programs at multiple schools. Literacy and other reading camps will be off as well. We'll also continue on Jump Start Summers Program at Central High School, where students can earn credentials along with a stipend. So, if they earn their credential, and of course, we've been doing this for a couple of years. These programs should be finalized by early March, and then information will be sent out to parents soon after. So, our goal, again, for these summer programs is for remediation, but also for enrichment opportunities as well. That's something we talked about, you know, offering those, try to meet the needs of all of our students. This past Saturday, we had our annual job fair. Mr. O'Bannon did a great job organizing that. We have very good candidates turn out. I will tell you, numbers are lower across the state or, you know, school districts looking to hire. I hear this from all over the place, from other superintendents. We are fortunate that we can typically staff our positions. There are some subjects that are more difficult than others, but it is becoming more and more challenging. There are less people going into the profession, and so it's a challenge. So, we have to do everything we can to make, you know, make our, make jobs in Central as enticing as possible, also make a great culture, great environment for the department. So, anyway, good candidates. I think, you know, principals were pleased with those who came out for that. Our student, teacher, and also support staff of the year program will be held on March 22nd. In the past, we would just honor these individuals typically- In the past, we would just honor these individuals typically at a board meeting. So in one month, we'll announce our students of the year, the next month, our teachers of the year. This year, we're excited to kind of revamp this award ceremony. So this celebration will be a standalone event at our high school. We hope to make this an event that's very deserving of these individuals. So the plan right now is to have it in the theater. But the library at the high school should be done at that point, fully furnished and everything. So we're excited about that. We would have the program in the theater, but in the commons area, we would have refreshments and things like that. So we're very excited about this. It'll give a little taste of letting people see a little bit of the interior work over there as well. Our next committee meetings will be held next Wednesday, February 23rd. And then schools, of course, will be closed for morning ground holidays on Monday, February 28th through Wednesday, March the 2nd. Students and teachers will return on Thursday, March the 3rd. And one final thing that I wanted to mention that I did not put in the report was I just wanted to thank the city of Central for working to quickly approve our conditional use permit for the new admin building, the stadium renovations. This, it's just like anything, just like our processes on going through things. It takes several meetings to get things approved. But at their council meeting last Tuesday, they knew that we were pressing to try to get a permit so we could get started over there. So they scheduled a meeting, a couple of the council members put it out there to have a meeting last Thursday. So they had a special meeting in here, and it was about a two-minute meeting or less. But they quickly approved the CUP, is what it's called. And so if you go by the stadium area now, you'll see signs of Los War. The trailers out there, should see some demo beginning this week. So this project will quickly, it's a 10-month project. And of course, we hope to have everything for the stadium completed before football season starts. So that would be, you know, mid-August, somewhere in there. So we're very excited about that. And hopefully, you'll be seeing a lot of work going on out there at the corner over the coming weeks. Yes, ma'am.
Will there be any charge to parents for any of these summer programs?
Help me with that, Chandler.
Summer school, if a student is doing credit recovery, yes, there will be. And if there's a small charge for a reading camp or a STEM camp, it'll be miniscule. It's for like a shirt, it'd be $5 to $10. It's stuff that I can't pay for out of the grant. But it would be very minimal at most.
Well, I'm excited to see the enrichment things.
We're trying to really think of STEM and performing arts, all of the above, some creative things. The principals are really thinking of some neat options for the parents.
Good, that's good.
Any other questions? That concludes my report.
Okay, the announcements we've got, one of them's already been made. February, the beginning will be held on Wednesday, February 23rd. And our next regular school board meeting will be held on Monday, March the 4th. And I would like to be all 14. What did I say?
Four.
Four, okay. Put a one in front of it. 14. I'd like to thank Central Middle News, too, for the nice Valentine Day. I don't know how I got one, but.
Did you take anybody else and say?
Any other announcements, board members?
Dr. Gardner, I wanted to make sure that our community knows that we're really concerned about this rezoning that is trying to take place on Booker Road. There is going to be, the rezoning would definitely affect our school system, the number of children that would be coming into our school system. It is, even though it's out of our city limits, it's within our school board area. So I'm very concerned about this, and I want to make sure that people are aware this planning and zoning will take place. We believe, the date I was given was March 21st, but I was told that it's normally on a Wednesday, which would be March 23rd.
Well, I was going to say that-
Did you find out exactly?
Well, I didn't find out for sure, but the mayor had told me about a month ago that it was deferred until March 21st by the state.
So that wasn't the date.
So I don't know for sure, but that's what he gave us as per-
But it is going to be the council chambers downtown, on the third floor of the governmental building. And we believe it's at 5:00 o'clock time. We'll find out exactly about any changes that have been made about that. But we're going to encourage our community to come out en masse and to support not rezoning this because of flooding and other issues and overcrowding in our school systems. So we'll make sure that you know exact dates and times so that we can let people know to show up en masse.
How will you get the community notified that this meeting is there and you want them there? A lot of you guys have social media.
We'll make sure it gets out. Basically, we've got two newspapers, we'll get it out. We'll get it out.
We'll probably put it on whatever it's called.
Well, Facebook.
Facebook and all those things. We'll use every means we have.
I would say multiple.
And it's going to be very important that people get out.
We'll make sure we spread the word. We're good at that.
It's just really important to show up. I mean, nothing speaks more than people in your face. You can get on Facebook, do all you want, and people just, you know, that. Showing up, being present shows your commitment. So try to make room in that day.
Any other announcements? You have one?
Nothing, I can't believe that.
We are being lost with this, our galmists.
Happy Valentine's Day.
Yes, thank you all for coming.
Move to a chair.